Welcome to the Montville Township Board of Ed meeting. We'd like to begin the meeting to this part, point. Mrs. Slint, roll call please.
Dr. Cordelina?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry? Dr. Modak?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien? Mr. Rappelcourt?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Amber? Mr. Ho-Hill?
Here.
My name is Mr. O'Brien now. Flaxaloo, please, ladies and gentlemen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation's right to govern it, is that we are worthy of justice for all.
Sunshine Law, Mrs. Slint, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Township Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper on April 7, 2019.
Thank you very much. We have one of our high school representatives here.
Malika couldn't make it today. Malika couldn't make it because he had work. It happens.
Well, we've got the better of the two, right?
So, not really much to say this time around, but sports, all of our sports teams are now getting into, I guess, crunch time. Everything is starting to get really important now with games that are going to qualify them. Our track team today just went to counties, and I'm not sure how they did yet, but I think they're going to do good. Stuff that's going on in the school. Mr. McManus, one of our history teachers, is hosting an event this June where there will be a simulation of what it was like to fight in World War II. I thought that was pretty cool. I haven't really had anything like that before. And the group of kids we sent to Deca Nationals unfortunately didn't advance any farther, but hey, nationals is nationals, so that's pretty cool. And the JV tennis season has also just come to an end with a record of 13-3, which is pretty solid for our tennis team, JV. Congratulations to them for a good season. And today in school, we concluded our senior prom and breakfast ticket sales. So, breakfast is coming soon, May 24, and prom comes six days after that on the 30th, so we're heading our best events soon. Also, I lost count again of how many days we have left. I forgot again. The laziness is just starting to get to me. The music department, they're having their spring concert. That's coming up this Monday, May 20, and with the band orchestra and choir performing. And so far, every performance I've been to gets better and better, so it'd be nice if we could go out and support them. Also recently, our valedictorian and salutatorian have been chosen. Our valedictorian is Rishi Miswani, and our salutatorian is Hendrick Mayer. Me, Malika, Rishi, and Hendrick are going to be giving speeches at graduations, so that should be pretty cool. And AP tests also have been going on, starting last week. I took AP Environmental Science and AP Human Geography. It was a bit of a challenge, but I think I scored highly, and that's all I got.
Very good. Now, at the senior breakfast, are you going to serve me when I get chosen?
Anything for you, sir. Sure, we'll have everything ready for you.
I think I'll pass on that. All right, thank you so much. Any questions?
Just the concert, you said it was Monday. I think it's actually, Monday, I think, is the small ensemble, and Tuesday is the band orchestra. Yeah, okay, yeah, I might have missed that. That's why I said it on the site that it was Monday, but I'll look into it.
I think Monday's the small.
Okay, so then that's like the chamber and all of the other ones, and then Tuesday's the band orchestra and choir.
And I think Wednesday and Thursday, Mike, is the middle school.
Correct. Also, a week full of concerts.
Concert season. Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Rotar, superintendent's report, please.
Okay, just a couple of things. I wanted to acknowledge that William Mason School has been named as a 2019 National School of Character. They join our three other national schools of character, Cedar Hill, Woodmont, and Lazar. So, we're very proud of them, and they will be celebrated at the state conference of the NFA, and then again at the National Forum in October in Washington, DC. And two promising practice awards, Woodmont School for their footprints program for 4th grade girls, and the district book that we talked about at our last meeting also was received a promising practice award. We're waiting on Eddie Pimienta, who is going to be doing a presentation for us this evening on mindfulness.
She's on her way.
She's coming in, she's on her way. All right, so my way of introduction, and I, we put out a survey last week. You know, we've done a lot in terms of our mindfulness implementation. We're gathering survey information back from the staff in terms of their impressions of the impact that mindfulness has had, the kinds of activities that they have engaged in with their students, and I'll be sharing that with the board in June. Woodmont in particular has made mindfulness very much a part of their every school day. They have two times during the day when the entire school observes a mindfulness moment, and that is led by the lovely woman that I'm going to introduce to you now, Eddie Pimienta, who leads the whole school in a reflection a couple of times a day, and it really has had a great impact on the school. And, you know, we've talked a lot about mindfulness, so I wanted to provide the board with an opportunity to have a glimpse of the way that the students at Woodmont have the opportunity to experience it. So, I will start things over again.
Good evening, everyone.
Speak a little louder, okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eddie Pimienta, I'm a paraprofessional at Woodmont School. And about three years ago, I approached Mr. Sucey Hill and spoke to him about implementing meditation at school. Because I have seen a lot of documentaries about it, and I had also read about the benefits of meditating, and how studying, meditating can help with focusing, it can help with releasing stress and frustration and anxiety. And Dom was very open to it. He said, "Run with it, try it in your class." So then I approached Mrs. Aiello, and I said, "I just came back to speak to Dom about this," and she said, "Sounds great, let's do it." So, we started practicing in her class. I would do it first thing in the morning, right after announcements, for 15 minutes, and I would just put on some nice soft music for the children, and I would just start talking to them about the importance of relaxing and letting go of anxiety, just being present at the moment. And then this whole thing about mindfulness came about, and it's really spreading, and we formed a committee, and we started, I, we spoke at the end of last year about having it as a school-wide and how we would do it, and I volunteered to do it over the intercom. And then we started doing it just in the morning, and then everybody came to me, "Oh, we need to do it right after lunch, too." And I'm like, "Okay, let me let," you know, told Dom, and said, "Fine." So, right after afternoon, right before the next period starts, we do another session in the afternoon as well. And it's been very well accepted and welcomed, and everybody loves it, and everybody loves coming to me saying, "You should do this all the time, you should do it, it's a big moment." And I'm like, "I want to give you the attention, sorry, but I'm going to give you guys a little sample of what I do, and I hope you guys enjoy it as much as I do." I usually have a Shaka Ball, which I use to signal the kids that it's time to settle down and get into the moment. Okay, under guests, I ask you to please close your eyes, and let's take a mindful moment. I need to breathe. Inhale, and blow it out. Keep in, and out. Inhale, and out. I would like you to visualize your body as you begin to relax, every muscle, starting with the tip of your toe, and working your way up to your feet, and your ankles, and up to your calves, your knees, up to your thighs, and your torso and arms, up to your shoulders, and your neck, all the way up to the top of the head. Paying close attention to where your body is feeling the signal, where you might be hanging onto some tension. Maybe it's your shoulders, maybe it's your neck, but I want you to release all that tension. Any frustration you might be hanging onto, blow it into the wind, any sadness, blow it into the wind. Because now about matters right now. The past is in the past, for matters that are here and now. We tend to hang on to things that are not important, but it's the little things that matter. Your kindness, to show compassion, empathy, to respect yourself and others. That's what matters. To be grateful for the little things that we take for granted on a daily basis, the simple things. So, that's why mindful moments are important, because we need that time for ourselves. We need to try time to focus all that energy, just relaxing, letting go of everything, all that negativity, and start to radiate positive energy, because when you're positive, everything around you becomes positive. When you have good thoughts in your head and in your mind, you can think clearly, if you want to, focus. When you're in a good mood, it boosts your senses, you can get more energy, and you can make better decisions and better choices. So, I want you to continue breathing at your own pace, and if it helps you, put your hands on your belly. Now, when you inhale, you should feel your belly filling up with air. When you exhale, you feel your belly going, sinking back into your spine. And that's what I want you to do, focus all that energy and balance. And as you do, and release all that negativity, you'll start to feel lighter, loose, making floating that air. And that's where you want to be, you want to feel that inner peace and relaxation. Today, I am grateful for the photo factory, who provide 8% of the oxygen we need every day. So, let's all continue to relax a little deeper into the breath. Inhale, clear your nose, and blow it out. Inhale, and out. Breathe in, and blow it out. One more, slow to the breathing, and out. Remember to always be positive, and namaste.
Thank you so much. I'm so happy that the board had an opportunity to experience, you know, these are the skills that we're hoping to develop in our students, so they can, you know, have that self-control and be able to self-regulate. And Eddie, you walk people through it so beautifully. It really is a wonderful experience for everybody, so thank you very much for coming.
Eddie, again, on behalf of the Board of Ed, I would also like to thank you for coming this evening for a very enlightening program, and one that we're very proud of, and one that we're happy you take the leadership role. Thank you.
I appreciate being invited, and I'm grateful that I'm able to share this with you to come with you, because I love doing it, and I love the impact it has on everyone, and I love getting that positive feedback of how beneficial this is to them, so.
I see you brought a big.
As much as I do.
I see you brought a big support group there. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Okay, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Deputy Housekeeper, report. The Business Administrator, Katia.
The Finance Committee met prior to this meeting, and we discussed the projects that are to be completed this summer. We had worked on the referendum projects at the high schools, Lazar, Cedar Hill, and William Mason last summer. Valley View, Hildale, and Woodmont will be receiving the work in their buildings, which includes bathrooms, media center, and gym renovations. The other three schools will still have some work done. We will be working on the air conditioning system at the 500 and 600 wing in the high school, as well as the replacement of the gym windows in the main gym. And Lazar, and Cedar Hill, and Woodmont will be having sound dampening panels put into their gyms to help with sound reduction. All of the district educational spaces will be, have their air conditioners completely installed by the time September 1 comes. And we are in the process of working on the Energy Savings Improvement Plan, which we receive money through the state for. That will begin replacing lights to LED lights, District Y. And the HVAC controls, which is going to enable us to control the heating and cooling in all of the spaces, is also underway and should be completed by the beginning of September.
Thank you. Any questions, Katia? Before we go into committee reports, I would like to ask everyone up here to just take a moment of silence. As all of you probably know, Karen Corrigan, whose mom passed away last week, and she was a good friend of the Board of Education. We shall endure many functions, and she will be missed. I know we offer our condolences to Karen and her family, and at this time, would just like to take a moment of silence for her mom. Thank you very much, and I know Karen, you run the agenda for the Finance Committee, but I know that, I think you wanted to say a few words about your mom before we continue.
I'll do it a little later, but thank you, Charlie.
Okay. You're up with the finance facility.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to what Katia mentioned, I think it's a bit of interest to the community, is that all the instructional spaces will be air-conditioned by September 1st, so I think everyone will be happy about that. And while I've got the mic, I'm sorry I had to leave. I didn't want to ruin your meditation by continuing to talk cop. But I happened to be at Woodmont, as many of us were, Dr. Seuss Day, and I was there early, and I happened to hear the meditation over loudspeaker, and the whole school just stops, and no matter where they are, they participate, and it's really wonderful, and I thank you for spearheading that before it became, it was popular. So, thank you.
Even King of Iron.
That concludes my report.
Director, Mike Connaught.
Go report.
Uh, question, Elton?
Nothing to report.
Communications, Karen?
Oh, we haven't met, but Dr. Rotar did send out an update for the, I'll put on that at the next meeting.
Safety and Security, John?
Nothing.
Delegates, New Jersey School Boards, Karen?
On May 16, I'm going to be attending a New Jersey PTA, New Jersey School Boards Association Legislative Day. This is a, it's a joint effort by the New Jersey PTA, New Jersey School Boards, to invite local, our state legislators to participate. They'll usually make some statements, they'll field questions. My understanding is Cory Booker will be there on that day. It runs from 9 to 2, and I'll be attending. And on May 18, there's the Delegate Assembly for New Jersey School Boards, and that's the body that sets policy for New Jersey School Boards, and I'll be there on that date as well.
Thank you. Morris County, Mike?
The next meeting for Morris County is on May 23. I see, what is it called, the Mountains?
Mountains.
Mountains Mountains Mountains.
Okay. John Morella, Strategic Services.
Next meeting will be June 12.
Director Williams, Mike?
Yeah, I was unable to attend the last meeting due to a personal commitment last Wednesday, but I would pass a couple of things on that I've been told to do. One is that, I believe, June 7 is a Friday, been identified as a potential date for DHT sponsoring an end-of-year dance at Lazar. I don't believe it's set in stone yet, but I know it's potentially in the works, and I'm just hoping that it'll work on that, people will keep that date open, and if it does go through on that date, hopefully it'll be a big success. And end-of-year Project Graduation, my understanding again is that there's going to be a cruise that night. I don't think the tickets have gone on sale yet, but again, trying to just draw up the publicity for it and make it known that the plan is to have a cruise going from, to a project graduation. Again, hopefully that'll be a success.
Thank you. Any PTA delegates, we can see, we can agree. Anybody?
I can report on Lazar. Lazar had their last PTC meeting of the year last week, and they approved their slate of the new officers for next year. Big thing coming up is this Thursday, the Living Essence Program at the PTC, along with a lot of other organizations, and including the board, helps sponsor, so the board is all invited. Hopefully, people can attend that. One of the speakers from the Living Essence Program will also be speaking Thursday night. I know there's a lot of other things going on Thursday, too, but I have a Michael Jewish Center hosted by One Montville, and the House of Worship, Reverend Sharon Grayer. And really, they just have a whole lot of the fun end-of-year stuff coming up, school-wide barbecue, the concerts are next week, 8th grade, the 7th and 8th grade on Wednesday, the 6th grade on Thursday, 8th grade field trip, and dance, and promotion, and winding down the school year.
For program.
I picked the Mustangs.
Joe?
A Woodmont. Okay, Mustangs, sorry. We had our meeting, the Mustangs had their last meeting of this year on May 1. Very well-attended meeting. The new officers were introduced, and some of the topics that they talked about, one of the, they were all important, but one important one was that the scam that was being pulled online by some company that was identifying themselves as being connected with coaches, wherever they got the names, coaches in the district, and so on. And I guess a couple of people in town fell for the pitch, and the warning was to be careful about, you know, these things, and to look at them and find out if they really aren't connected with the school district. They talked about the sports banquet, which you, you've got an invitation to, which is coming up in June, the 10th, I think, of June. Scheduling for the fall, the Mustangs are going to hold an athletic panel discussion for students and parents in planning for September. Two topics that came up at the meeting was, first of all, the issue about the car decoration. Tried to, about car decoration. And I tried to explain, to clarify for everyone, that the board really does not intend, or does not have control over what people do in their yard, what they decorate their cars and so on, in their yard. And I think they were receptive, understanding the difference between their yard and their car in their yard, and coming on school property, so I think that went well. Also, I tried to answer as many questions as I could regarding the budget, okay, and I think that went very well. So, of course, you know, Mustangs are a very, very supportive group for our school. The athletic director was there, and he gave an update on a lot of issues, including the scam, including the sports programs, et cetera, et cetera. So, it was a, it was a very, very good meeting, this one. And we're not meeting again until September. There's no meeting until September. And while I have the floor, can I, although it's not a liaison thing, can I mention another topic? About One Montville. This week on Thursday night, One Montville is having a presentation at the Michael Jewish, a person from South Carolina regarding the events that took place there. It's at 7 o'clock this week. And also, just so you know, that One Montville is involved in parking with the 4th of July fireworks celebration, which is not on the 4th of July, it's on the 29th of June. And of course, we're still looking, you know, for as many volunteers as we can get to help with that. That's a very, very important fundraiser for One Montville. Also, part of the discussion at One Montville today was about attendance. We're hoping that as we go into next year, into the next school year, we get a lot more people coming out to the meetings, which are mostly scheduled right today at 9:30. They do have some meetings, but mostly they meet during the day. And we're hopeful that we'll increase attendance by people who agree with the goal of One Montville for the next school year. Green Day is coming up this Friday, and we ask that everybody for that day, wherever they are, whatever they're doing in Montville, wear their beautiful green shirts, or anything green for Green Day this week. That's it.
About one, if you're finished it out, do you have a liaison from the high school?
I'm sorry.
High school liaison?
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. The meeting is tomorrow night, all right, and I have to tell you, I have, I have real conflict. If there's anyone that could attend in my stead for tomorrow night, I approve.
I would really appreciate you letting me know if there's anyone aboard, but I have a serious conflict in one night.
If anyone can attend, just tell you a mic and he'll tell you where, what, how it went, okay? Go back to Cedar Hill. Karen, anything from Cedar Hill, did you see?
The next meeting is on May twenty-second.
Okay. David, Hilldale?
No, actually, they're doing pretty well. They had their trips event, I believe. And they also have a bunch of fun things coming up for the end of the year. It is getting to be close to the end of the year again. Field Day Fun Fair, they also have an art show, a concert coming on. Also, there is a, I'm not sure, there's a daddy-daughter dance in Tendai. Is that in District Y or not? Might be. Yeah. So they've got some fun things coming up.
Thank you, David. Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I went to the last Woodmont PTA meeting on the twenty-ninth. Discussed the upcoming slate of officers and some upcoming events. There were three at the time, one of which has already come and gone. Trips I attended this past Friday, I saw Dr. Roftar there also. This found really nice booths, I've got some very nice soap, it's very useful. And I hope to attend both the concert this Thursday and the Fun Fair on Friday. I encourage anybody who can, attend the Fun Fair. It's good for the kids, and if you don't have any kids, good food.
Is that it, Mike?
Is that about enough?
Your mic control, anyway. An opportunity for anybody to ask any questions on the agenda? Well, then, as soon as we do the agenda, anybody else asks any questions? Any questions on the agenda from anybody? Public, and can the motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments on the minutes? Adam I? Jay gives grams donations. Jay, policy, okay? Bill is financial. Personnel? Item L?
I would like to make a comment, Charlie, on the retirement of Patty Drovich. It's L two-one. That's the confidential secretary to the superintendent. You know, and I'm happy that Patty's retiring and that she's gonna be able to spend her days free. As any, well, while I was board president for, during that time, you have a lot of interaction with confidential secretary, with Patty. I had a lot of interaction with Patty. And not only was she a very competent secretary, very efficient, very friendly. What I admired most about her, really, was her interactions with public. She was the sweetest, kindest person in perhaps sometimes the most difficult circumstances. And she was always respectful, always treated everyone kindly, tried to problem-solve as much as she could, without interfering sometimes to the superintendent. And it, you know, she's, most people don't know who she is. But if you, if you happen to come to know her in the position that I was in and that Charlie's in now, you really do appreciate the, how important she is in the operations of the school district. So I just, I wanna wish her well. And I know I've made a lifelong friend in Patty. And I look forward to spending time with her after I retire.
Thank you, Karen. And we're going to travel, do trips. And we have no actions on the policies tonight. Roll the wall, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. Efferman?
Yes, I'm staying on I.
Dr. Cordelina?
Yes, accepted, staying on M one-one.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Next part of our agenda, we have old business. The old business to bring up at this time. New business, any new business at this time? Next part is public hearing, questions, anything that's not on the agenda? Or anybody has any comments they'd like to share with the Board of Education at this point?
General board comments? Yes, you ready for that? So, just as Charlie mentioned, my mom passed away about a week ago today, a week and a few days. And I just wanna address my, my board colleagues, the administrators in the district, the supervisors, principals, teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, this is in no particular order, NTA leadership, and other staff, and elected officials. I just have to say that my family and I were truly overwhelmed by the school community's outpouring of support, kindness, and sympathy during this time of sorrow. I want to thank you so much for the flowers, the cards, the meals, and the visits. And your words and actions provided comfort. And my family and I are very grateful to you. We really do live in a special community. And we especially have a very special school and community. And I'm really grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any members of the public have anything they would like to do? Talk to the board? Okay. The next board meeting is June fourth. When after that, is June eighteen. Middle school graduation on the nineteenth. High school graduation is on the twentieth. I would entertain it this time. Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second by? Second. Second.
Palmer? All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to thank the Woodmont braziers.